I'm Nina Chantai, Shetina Lesleturanguahan, his back from recess. Speaker Terlahey will recognize you this time.
Sidoos Masi, notwithstanding the House rules, standing rules, I would move to go back to motions. I'd like to make a motion for an override.
There has, thank you, Speaker, there has been an objection. All those in favors to go back to motion signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, notwithstanding the veto of the governor on bill number 13-37COR, which is an act to amend section 83102D and add a new 83116 to chapter 83, all of title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing public notice and transparency of the actions by the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Committee responsible for the proposed medical healthcare campus, I move to override this bill and to place it on the voting file. I'll speak very briefly on this. We have discussed this at great lengths. This again is a bill that would just allow doctors to serve as well on this healthcare center committee that is planning the new hospital. It allows the chairperson of the Committee on Health to serve on this healthcare committee. But the most important part of bill number 13 is that it requires the healthcare center committee to operate pursuant to the open government law, so that its meetings will be open, there will be notice, and that the public can hear when they make decisions as to locations that are decided, locations that are ruled out, and just the rationale that goes behind the decisions that are being made in regards to the new hospital. And I believe the community will be better informed, and of course, our legislature as well, who will be bearing the obligations. Sidoos Masi, colleagues, and I ask for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Senator Terlahey, I mean, Taidegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this override. As you know, we introduced legislation that created a hospital task force in the 35th Guam Legislature, one of the first bills I introduced. And this task force was simply just to be more transparent, to provide the public to see exactly where we're moving forward on a new hospital. It's obvious, we all need a new hospital. But we also need to be very transparent, and we need to be engaged. The governor has said countless times that she's looking forward for this body to be a part of building a new hospital, on countless times. This bill would actually bring us to the table, bring us all to the table. We talk about collaboration. One of my good colleagues from...
A. Parkinson, where are you from?
Senator Parkinson mentioned, you know, just sorry taking out decorum, but, you know, mentioned wanting to work together. When we did the override in bill 12, everybody in this body voted for that override. And this is part of bill 12, to bring transparency to our public. That's all it does, so that we're all sitting at the same table. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Taidegui. Anyone else on the motion? If not, Speaker Terlahey, you'd like to close? Oh, I'm sorry, Speaker Terlahey, can I raise up your hand? Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice. Yeah, you know, after bill 12, just to my colleagues, overriding this is a nothing burger. I mean, we already went out on a limb and stood up for what this legislature's obligation, responsibility to the people of Guam is. We stood up for our role as a separate but co-equal branch of government when we overrode bill 12. That was the big one. And unfortunately, the spin of that override, that successful override, has been dizzying. Dizzying. I wonder, when I hear these comments, these pronouncements out of these directors in Adalup who say the legislature rejected, rejected the new hospital. How again can we reject something we never even got the chance to look at it? They say they want us to work together. How, fan, can we work together if we don't even know when the meeting is? All we did with that override was mandate that we're going to review any and all leases that this government of Guam enters into with a federal foreign government. That's it. We didn't say we reject it. We didn't say throw it in the trash can. We didn't get to say any of that. We didn't even get to that point. Because when we turn on the lights, Atlanta, everybody scattered, tore up the lease. So we did that, and that was courageous. I was so proud of our colleagues on that day, because we did it together. And it was a statement that we made, you know? And I think that, you know, the louder statement was what happened after that, when they just took that whole project and tore it up. So this really, this override is, I mean, I'm not trying to demean the work that we do here, but this is really nothing. But it's something. It says something that we have to introduce a bill, and then watch that bill get vetoed, and then now here try and override this bill, when all this bill does, very simple, relative to increasing public notice. Who is against increasing public notice? How dare you stand opposed to increasing public notice? The public deserves all the notice. Increasing public notice and transparency. Please don't tell me now that we're going to override, attempt to override this bill 13, that now some of my colleagues are against increasing public notice. Now they're against increasing transparency. Put fah boit. Let's be consistent here, okay? Let's stand together. I feel good. I feel like we're about to pass both these measures we're going to vote on. I feel it. You feel it. We're going to pass it unanimously. Why? Why? It's the right thing to do, to pass this leap, to pass this energy credit. Well, guess what? This is also the right thing to do, to vote to override this senseless veto. This is a silly veto. Really? You're going to veto this because we want you to publicize the meetings? Off ahead now. You're going to veto because the one group of people we should listen to, if we're going to build a new hospital, no matter if we're going to build it at Lalu or Sutpun Point or wherever. I think when you talk about 21st century healthcare, I don't know, I'm new at this, but probably you should talk to the doctors. Probably. I don't know. Probably they might have some ideas. Probably they might have their two cents. One of my colleagues, and when we first debated this issue, had made a big deal about the chairperson of the Committee on Health being on this 21st Century Healthcare Center Committee. Why would you be opposed to that? When by overriding bill 12, we said that we are, we, we are Ela Heslactura Ngwahan. We deserve to be involved in all of these processes, whether it's the chairperson on the Committee of Health, or the Chair of Federal Foreign Affairs, or the Chair of OFB, or the Chair of Education Public Safety. The people of Guam want us to work together. But the senior and I, we cannot work together if it's pure my way or the highway. Never mind my way. Never mind the highway. Let's do it the right way. So this is really basic. Comply with the open government law. Atlanta, we got lectured. We got lectured at the start of the 37. They said, "We're not following the open government law." And then when we go and make them try and follow the open government law, now they're going to get mad? You're going to get mad because we want you to tell the people of Guam what's going on? Don't get mad, Umby. We got this, Guam. We got this. It's very basic. I want to sometimes bang my head against the wall because been here five months, and it seems like we have to keep on again explaining over and over the most basic, simple concepts that a government has to be open and transparent. And I'm new here. Why do I have to explain to politicians with more experience, more terms? The very simple concept of the people have a right to know. So please, please, my colleagues, mungam I like that. Let's stand together. Let's stand together, please. Come on, guys. It's very simple. Increase public notice, increase transparency. Let the doctors have their input. Let the Chair of the Committee on Health, let the legislature in the door. Because now that the administration has rejected Eagles Field, now that the lieutenant governor has rejected Eagles Field, now that Adalup has rejected federal assistance to build a new hospital, it wasn't us. We just said, "Let us see fan." Let us see fan, how good is the deal? But when we got the chance to look, oh, no, you cannot look at this. Nope. Deal's gone, up in smoke. And they want to blame the senators? You want to blame the people's legislature? Because all we did was stand up for what's supposed to be our job? And so I said on the previous successful override attempt, that the deeper we got into this issue, that the more I felt my colleagues were very smart senators in here, the more they would understand what it was really about. It's about the same thing, this bill number 13. I know sometimes my words is very hot. But I'm going to ask you nicely. Put fah boit. Put fah boit. Please, support this override attempt, so we can be consistent. So we can show them that we can stand together. Man, who knew it? Please, my dear colleagues, let's be consistent, and let's be for the people of Guam, and let's support this override attempt. Sidoos Masi.
Any, thank you, Senator Barnett. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? If not, Speaker, Terlahey, you may close.
Sidoos Masi. And thank you for the support, colleagues. Again, this bill that I'm asking us as a legislature to override really is just to apply the open government to the 21st Century Healthcare Center Committee, which this legislature created. We created that. I think we all thought at the time that the open government would apply to that committee as it applies to every other entity of the government of Guam, including task forces and subcommittees. But it didn't. It doesn't. I was chastised in one of the governor's letters about me. The speaker didn't attend the meetings. That's correct, because I did attend meetings until they stopped giving notice. That's exactly what happened. So while we acted in good faith, and we passed the bill, and we passed that committee, we created that committee in good faith, and in good faith, we appropriated $35 million a year, in good faith, thinking this would be a transparent process, giving all the power to Gita and the governor to make every decision, but to be guided by a task force of government of Guam agencies and other professionals. That's it. The bill will not take away an ounce of power from the governor, if anyone's afraid of that. She will still have all the power to make the decisions. Gita still has all the power to determine the financing. How many people are going to be served by our new hospital? Where it's going to be located? All of it, their decision. All we ask is that while they are discussing these things in this committee that we created, that in good faith, they also open that up to the government of Guam and to the people of Guam to hear the deliberations. To hear. If there's federal assistance available, we might adjust our appropriations. To just lay that out on the table, not to hide it. That's all. I feel it's a very simple ask, and one that necessary at this point for the legislature. And hopefully then, we all move forward in good faith. Of course, this committee could never meet again, but we're going to hope, right? That they will also act in good faith, and that they will deliberate through this committee, and not behind any other closed doors or any other entity, not controlled by the government of Guam, not controlled by the open government law. Because all of these things affect what we do in here. How much we're going to set aside during the upcoming budget to continue to appropriate for a new hospital versus how much the people of Guam are going to be obligated going forward? It goes back to that decision, and I can't understand why they would not be given the ability to follow along as these decisions are being made. So again, I sincerely ask my colleagues for their support on this. I think it would be consistent with our good faith efforts in the past, our good faith asks in regards to this hospital, that we just have the information laid out so that we are able to interact, and people of Guam are able to follow along. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker.
Speaker Terlahey, on the motion to place it?
So I reiterate my motion to place the override of bill number 13-37LS on the voting file.
On that motion, are there any objections? There's an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Are there any other motions? Seeing no other motions, we are now back to third reading file. The folders have been passed out. We will begin with the first item in the consideration of the daily file, which is bill number 75-37LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 75-37LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, introduced by Joe S. Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Duane T. Dees and Nicholas, Roy A. B. Canata, William A. Parkinson. An act to add a new section 13 to chapter 11 All of Public Law 36-107, General Appropriations Act of 2023, relative to providing assistance for private businesses in their recovery from the economic effects of the COVID-19 pandemic through a program established by the Guam Economic Development Authority.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Vice Speaker, Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahey. Speaker Terlahey, aye.
Bill number 75-37LS received 14 ayes and one nay. Bill number 75-37LS is duly passed by this body. Bill number 83-37LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 83-37LS, as amended by Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, and substituted on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahey, Joe S. Augustine. An act to appropriate $15,581,367 from fiscal year 2022 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 36-54, as amended, and $10,799,633 from fiscal year 2023 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 36-107, as amended, to the Guam Power Authority for a five-month extension to the Programmen Azoda Pada E Ta 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 Energy Credit Program, relative to providing customers with another $500 credit toward their account.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahey. Speaker Terlahey, aye.
Bill number 85-37LS received 15 ayes. Bill number 85-37LS is duly passed by this body. I'm sorry. Let me reread that. Bill number 83-37LS received 15 ayes, and bill number 83-37LS is duly passed by this body. Sidoos Masi. We're now on the voting file. On the nomination of Honorable Robert R. D.C. Hoffman to serve as a member, Mayor's Council of Guam Representative, of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Robert Hoffman received unanimous support by this body. On the nomination of Daniel A. Tidingfong to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. On the nomination of Daniel A. Tidingfong to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, please raise your hand. Robert, I mean, Daniel A. Tidingfong received unanimous support by this body. On the nomination of Antoinette M. Kleiner to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Antoinette M. Kleiner received unanimous support by this body, as duly confirmed. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagen-Guahan on bill number 83-37LS... Shh, shh. The question is, notwithstanding the veto of Imaga Hagen-Guahan on bill number 13-37COR... Yep. Can we have the clerks, please, read the title?
Bill number 13-37COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahey, Talot T. Taidegui, Chris Barnett, Joanne Brown, Frank Bloch Jr., Jesse A. Luhon, Sabina Flores-Perez, Christopher M. Duñez, Duane T. Dees and Nicholas. An act to amend section 83102D and add a new section 83116 to chapter 83, all of title 12, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing public notice and transparency of the actions by the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Committee responsible for the proposed medical healthcare campus.
Shall the bill pass, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagen-Guahan? Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, nay. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahey. Speaker Terlahey, aye.
Notwithstanding, sorry. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Hagen-Guahan on veto bill number 13-37COR is overridden by this body, it received 12 ayes and three nays. Bill number 13-37COR veto is overridden by this body. Colleagues, we've exhausted our consideration of the daily file, both the third reading and the voting file. We're now on brief extension of remarks. Is there anyone that'd like to be recognized? Senators Siniklis, you are recognized.
Senators Sinicless, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I spent a great deal back here reading Dad's Book of Wisdom. And I just wanted to say what we did today here, offering relief to our ratepayers, our GPA ratepayers, and offering relief to our businesses as well as a wonderful thing. Also transparency regarding building the new hospital. I think that's a really, really great thing. So it's just never, it's never, there's never a bad time to do the right thing. And I think we did the right thing here today. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos ma si, Senators Sinicless. Anyone else on extension of remarks? Senator Tidigui, you are recognized.
Sidoos ma si, Madam Speaker. I think it was a great win with the override of Bill 13. And appreciate all my colleagues who did vote for that, the bill to be overridden. Madam Speaker, a lot of information was provided to us. Unfortunately, we didn't have BBMR in our Committee on the Rule, Committee of the Whole to give us more information, to ensure whatever DOA was telling us was actually accurate. But we do have some numbers that we can follow. Numbers that they say are going to be realized, they feel very, more than optimistic that it's going to be a reality. One, $10 million every year, I mean, every month in excess fund to the end of the fiscal year, $10 million. Not five, that was said the day before. But 10. Now we're going to see, Madam Speaker, which bill will be paid out first? Will the money be given to GPA, which is $5.2 million every month for the next five months? It's very minimal, 5.2 million. Will the Governor fork out her first $5 million to the LEAP program instead of going into the general fund? So we're going to keep a close, close eye. I think this body is going to keep a very close eye on moving forward because we know how important the bill, especially for the credit for GPA, is going to have and affect our families around the island. Even though I'm very cautious about moving forward. And I'd like to commend this good Senator from Tuning, Senator Duennias, on his remarks about deficit. I hope every media gets it right this time when they put it out there on the numbers. And how really we came in to clearing up our deficit. But most especially, Madam Speaker, being here today to help support our community was something that we all should be very proud that we've done and voted on. But we also have to be very cautious moving forward like we have been in these last, since I've been here at the legislature. Being very conservative. Because it stopped raining federal funds a while ago. It stopped, people. The reality is it's not going to rain anymore with all these funds. Time to buckle up and realize that it takes this whole body to decide on, on our budget this term coming up for FY '24. This body as a whole, not one or two individuals who like to tend to listen to the top of the hill, but this whole body, and we're all keeping an eye on it. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and wish my colleagues a very happy, if you're a mother, very happy Mother's Day. I know we're not coming back until after May and wish you and your moms a very, very blessed one at that. Thank you.
Sidoos ma si, Senator Tidigui. On brief extension of remarks, Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to rise in thanks to this good body, the 37 Guam Legislature. Is going to go down as one of the most badass legislatures it's ever been because of the work that we're doing. We've done a lot of great work this term. We were able to give the Guam Department of Education much-needed funds to the tune of 30, I'm sorry, 20. Well, we tried 30, we got 20, that's still something. We're able to, again, stand up as our, stand up for ourselves as a separate but co我们会a branch of government. We're able to pass these great assistance programs for our businesses and, and our ratepayers. And there's a lot of great work that we're going to accomplish together. Despite our differences day to day, I think, you know, when it comes to the big issues that we can come together and we can, we can debate and discuss these issues and really pass them with overwhelming support. It makes me proud to call you my colleagues. I also want to wish my mom a happy Mother's Day. It's the hardest working woman I know. I was raised by a single mother, didn't really have a relationship with my dad. So I always joke that I don't know how to change the oil in the car, but I sure can clean a house. And so, you know, my mom sacrificed so much to raise my brother and my sister and I. And I just want to thank her again from the bottom of my heart. And I hope that, you know, she's proud of the work that I do here. Because, you know, really, we, we didn't come from much, you know? We're never rich, we struggled. I learned, I learned my math by counting the change from food stamps. And this was back in the day when we, we got the food stamps, it was a paper coupon. And, you know, we used to have to go and buy a piece of gum down at a Trampaco store in Moleso to get the 95 cents back so that we could buy the things that we needed for the house that we couldn't buy with the food stamps. So it was always a struggle, but even though we didn't have money, what we did have was family. And I wouldn't have it any other way to, you know, I would never trade the way that I grew up. I think that I learned a lot of valuable lessons that allowed me to stand the way that I stand. And I wouldn't be standing this way if it wasn't for my mom. And so I just want to thank you, Mom. Also want to wish the mothers of my children. There's only two, guys, there's only two, all right? There's only two. Contrary to popular belief, I only have two mothers of my children, okay? Don't judge. But yeah, to my, the mother of my older two children, Katrina, wishing her a happy Mother's Day. And also the mother of my young, my young bucks, Jojean. So definitely the mothers of my kids have played such an important role and my kids love them so much. And and I hope that, you know, they can speak highly about me on Father's Day. And so I just thank them. And all the mothers on Guam, you know, we're a matriarchal society, right? And I know that probably each and every one of us has a great story to tell, whether it's about your mother, your biological mother, or any woman who pucks side you, right? Because I often thought of my grandmother as my mom too, because she definitely imparted a lot of wisdom, just like my mom did. So to all the mothers out there, happy Mother's Day. In the words of the late Tupac Shakur, "You are appreciated." So again, thank you to my colleagues for this great work that we're able to really do productively this week, right? It's a short week. I thought by looking at the measures on the floor and knowing that, that we each have a difference of opinion on a lot of these things, right? That we're able to come together and to come together expeditiously. And I think that was because the, the need was very urgent. And I was glad that we're able to move forward and to pass these measures, but still ask the questions that we needed to ask. And I also want to thank, I never thought I would say this, but I want to thank Mr. Ed Byrne for coming down here with a little more information than he did last time. We actually had documents this time. And so he was able to answer, you know, some of our questions anyway, a little more convincingly and clearly than he did when we were, than he did when we were entertaining the general pay plan raises. So again, I'm very grateful to be here with this good body, this August body, as I say that in May. Thank you very much. And again, happy Mother's Day, Guam. Estas, sidoos ma si, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos ma si, Senator Barnett. On brief extension of remarks, anyone else would like to be recognized? Sen, if not, then Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I want to thank all of our colleagues for this session, for working together, especially to our team, the clerks team here at the legislature and all of our support staff who make the sessions possible, sidoos ma si. I want to also recognize today and thank our colleagues for joining us wearing, putting on purple with the Lupus Awareness Group of Guam for World Lupus Day. And I want to thank the Lupus Awareness Group of Guam for the work that they do to support those in our community with lupus and to bring awareness to this disease. And I think, again, our colleagues for joining in to help spread this awareness. I also want to wish a very happy summer to all of our students in schools who are being promoted throughout this week, who are graduating in the weeks to come, to thank our teachers, the staff, the administrators, the parents, and especially the students for a great school year. Wish them a very fun and happy summer, a safe summer altogether. And of course, as the colleagues before us, thank you and happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers on Guam, especially to my mom, all of our mother figures in our lives, our Ninas, our grandmothers, who have raised us to be the people we are today, who have given us the foundation we have as a community. Thank you for all of the sacrifices that you've made for us and for instilling in us these values and traditions that we will carry on and continue to make our families proud. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Again, thank you to our colleagues. And with that, I'd like to ask to adjourn this session subject to the call of the speaker.
On the motion to adjourn our session subject to the call of the speaker, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned subject to the call.